Alright, it is one minute to five. We're going to have Counselor Barnes give us a word of prayer and then we'll call the minutes to order.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to meet together as Town Council. We're grateful for thy blessings and thankful to serve in our community and thank you for the good communities that we have. And pray that we will strive to execute good laws that will help our community to thrive and to make our citizens feel welcome and happy to be here. We ask you to bless us as we meet at this time, that the things that we say and do and decide on will be in accordance with thy mighty will. Invite thy Spirit to be with us now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Alright, we will call the minutes of the Calston Town Council to order and we want to welcome Kim for Temple City South and Corey McCarthy for Channel 32, Channel 4. And welcome to Saminyak who is going to be on delegation today. So welcome for coming. On the additions and adoption of agenda, I just want to let you know that under questions, we will have Counselor Bantry give us an announcement regarding the museum. Okay? And so with this, I need to have those gender adopted.
Want to adopt later.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Well, then you more than welcome to come and give us a sense of your quarterly report and Counsel, if you have any questions, I need to help you understand that it gets a little bit better, you will be welcome to ask.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
I have your fourth quarter stats for the year, which is our third quarter stats. Person offenses for the fourth quarter, we had thirty, which is comparable to last quarter, we had twenty-nine. Property offenses was sixty-three for the quarter, which is consistent with the past two quarters as well. Other criminal code was forty-seven, which is down considering previous two quarters. Drug offenses, we had seven reported, which is up four from the previous quarter. Federal statutes, we had five, six the previous quarter. Provincial statutes minus traffic, we had two eighty-six, which is about a hundred less than previous. And provincial traffic, we had thirty-four, sixty-one than previous. Criminal code traffic, we had four, which is down one from the previous quarter, five. And collisions were up slightly from last quarter, we had thirteen as opposed to ten.
Thank you. So Counselor Bantry?
Sergeant Zane, I like the looks of the stats as you give them. However, the alarming thing is the year, year total, year-to-date total. You know, the property offenses at two-hundred-and-forty-four, other CC offenses, two-seventy-three, you know, we were still quite high in those areas. I give you accolades for the reductions in a lot of areas from last year. As I looked at your report and then compared it to last year, there's a lot of areas that are way down. My concern is, and I don't know if you can answer this, but with the downturn in the economy and things like that, do you feel like we're going to have in our little community an increase in property crime?
I don't know with the downturn, I don't think we will. I mean, I don't, I think that's more of the oil impact, which is further to the north for us, so I personally, I don't think we will.
I also want to remind you, Counsel, that the numbers when they are up means that the police has been very actively involved in solving many of those cases or at least being able to be right on the pulse of the issue. Am I correct?
Yep, you're correct. The person's offenses, they're obviously a lot easier to solve usually than property. And yeah, when you have the fluctuations in numbers, like you know provincial traffic is down, which will mean we're busy and busier in other areas taking up, occupying more times.
Right. So I really think on the whole, the only area that is showing maybe some more movement than in the past is probably the drug issue, which means that you are intercepting people who are trafficking.
Yeah, with that one, yeah. And people in possession, absolutely, yeah.
Which is a good, good sign for us?
Yeah, it is. And then some of them, when they're reported like that too, is people providing information also, so.
So that is good, so you have good information and you're able to make arrests.
Yeah, no, the more information you get from the community, the safer place it can be used in.
So thank you. And that is a good point for citizens to know, that if there is traffic around their property that seems to be a little bit odd, that would be well to contact your office and let you know that there is an influx of traffic that doesn't seem normal.
Yep, some important suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons, and it's like back to property crime. Those are crimes of opportunity, right? So it goes back to, you know, our message of make sure your home is locked and your personal property, your vehicles are locked.
Right. Counselor Barnes?
A question and comment. What's the ticket price now on an illegal U-turn? I heard it went up.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that's exactly what it is, but I am meeting with the mayor, Counselor Creed and Jeff on the twenty-second, and I'll give them that answer.
Okay. I noticed, I'm right next to the bookstore and I see every day several people pulling that U-turn and I go out and I see them and I say, "Do you realize that you just did an illegal U-turn?" "What?" I said, "I'm not sure what it caused," but I said, "I think it's a couple hundred bucks to get caught doing it." And, oh my goodness, but you know, it doesn't faze them, they're still doing it and I see people that...
Off the top of my head, I want to say it's a hundred-and-fifty-five.
Okay. I know that's what it was.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much. And so, thank you, Zane, for coming to Counsel before Counsel and helping us understand how our policy is going. And I know you are folks more visible, more present in our community, and that is really a factor that creates a feeling of increased security.
No, and thank you, and actually, as a positive note, we've actually received a lot of positive comments in the last few weeks, so that's nice to have also.
And so I appreciate that, and if you want to bring that back to your detachment, sure you would appreciate that on the video.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we have the minutes of December eighth, two thousand and fifteen. If you are comfortable with them, we will adopt them. Counselor Barnes?
Move to adopt the minutes from December the fifteenth, okay, December the eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Any comments? No? Alright. All in favor? Thank you. So now we will carry on the work that we started at CCW, the Committee of the Hall, and it shouldn't take us very long to go through the rest of the agenda unless you have really exceptions to some of the work we did last week. Alright, six A, Policy B fifteen-one. It's a policy for budget process and timeline. This is a way to create more transparency and accountability and give us and administration a good center where we're going with the budget process. So any comments or concerns? I think it's well-written, it's clear, and so if not, I need a motion to accept this policy.
I'll make a motion to...
Counselor Bantry?
To accept the Policy B fifteen as the two thousand and sixteen budget be adopted as presented.
I think what you need to do is, it's a broad policy regarding budget process, so you may want to just adopt it as a...
The process.
As a process, as a policy for budget process and timeline.
Okay, and how about operating and capital budgets?
That will be part of that process.
That motion.
That's kind of...
They're already inside there.
This policy just dictates the scheduling of those other policies.
And it will...
Beauty.
It's okay. Alright, so the policy will read that we accept the policy for budget process and timeline as presented in Policy B fifteen-one. Okay? All in favor? Thank you.
Question over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we have, we have capital budgets and operating budgets...
Okay. Counselor Bantry, can I help you with this one?
I'm still under the understanding that they have to be in separate motions.
Can I, can I help you?
This is a policy, not a budget.
It's a policy. So that is how we're going to do it. When we have the budget that comes in May, you will see that the budget will come within the framework of the budget, you will have all the amortization and all that, and at the end, you will be seeing it with it and without it. So you will have two figures, but you can have it within, according to municipal affairs, you can have it within one budget, so long you show the two figures.
Okay.
Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
The final, the final line, as long as you show it as two.
You have to show it as two figures.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright. Six B, Policy R forty, reserves policy. And as you remember, we decided to create a different model for reserving funds.
And yeah, we discussed that in the CCW, so I will, I will move the adoption of Policy R forty, the reserves policy.
Okay.
There was, if you remember, there was a little tweet there, we put that if the CAO has, has the power to move up to twenty thousand dollars and that if he does that, if he exercises that, he will notify Council. That was the addition that came to that and we approved that, recommended to Council.
Right, it was a distraction.
I will move that we now approve that, that policy.
All in favor? Thank you. Now, the next section is something that we did not discuss in CCW, but thanks to Shim, we have been brought to understand something a little bit more clearly about the MGA. It did quite a better research, contacted municipal affairs, and because ours is to try to improve governance and to create more transparency and a better streamline on how we do it, I asked Jeff if he wants to review with us Section one eighty dash one with us from the MGA that precisely tells us how we should be doing things.
Thank you, Mayor. This is very quick, it's very simple. When we were looking, Shim and I have been talking about a number of governance pieces, Section one eighty says, "A council may act only by resolution or by law." Period. And we've got a good enough relationship that we've had lots of times where we said, "Jeff, you got enough direction on that? You bet." And I do it and you're comfortable it gets done and I bring it back to you and we're fine. But under the Act, they want a resolution or a bylaw, because that's what allows you to move things forward. So I bring it forward to say going forward, we'll be a little more formal about, you know, "Jeff, do you have enough direction on that? You bet. Let's make a motion and we'll, we'll do it." And then it's in the minutes as the motion and it's very clear. The other thing is we, we, when we were looking at minutes and Shim did some homework, very often we put a lot of preamble and what the discussion was and Counselor so-and-so thought this and Counselor so-and-so thought this. We're adding a lot of subjectivity to our minutes, which could be dangerous. So the recommend, recommendation is when you have everything in motion, it's very objective. This was the direction that was given. All that preamble before is maybe secondary to what the resolution was. So what I would encourage here is that between us, we're more vigilant in motions and doing, and having some preamble in our motions of, you know, whereas this, then this is why we're doing that and it's part of the resolution. And there's no subjectivity in the minutes, because it can make one counselor seem the villain in a certain meeting and another counselor seem the hero, because it's coming from the perspective of the minute taker, and so we want to be careful of that. I don't think we're doing anything wrong, we're certainly not in any kind of issue there, it just, it'll tighten things up a little bit for us.
I think it's a very good point, and so it is going to help us to, to work on our skills with, whereas it's not going to feel too comfortable at first, as we, we know, but I think as we practice it, it'll become second nature and we'll do it. Yes?
Would administration like a motion?
Yeah. No, it's already in the Act.
Have a motion to have motion, and if you follow the Act.
Yeah, just follow the Act.
Alright.
Just ask you to get your Act.
So...
That's very good.
So moving forward from here on, that's the way we're going to do business, and Jeff and Shim will be good to remind us, need to tidy up and be a little bit more focused on, on our background ideas. Okay, seven, other business. Seven A, County ACP grant application. I have a little bit of a comment, and tomorrow we have a meeting with the county. In the desire to really push it forward very quickly, there are a few typos and stuffs that need to be cleaned up, so tomorrow we shall let them know that there needs to be a little bit of cleanup and...
You may just want to explain, "We have a meeting," so the Counselors who aren't aware don't think they're missing something.
Yeah, we have an inter-municipal meeting, which is part of our committees, and this is Counselor Creed and other people and myself. And so it's tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Whereabouts, by the way, of here?
Along those lines, maybe to yourself or Shim, if I could get a written copy, for whatever reason, my PDF didn't load on the...
Mine didn't either. It's a little tricky, yeah.
Oh, really? Yeah, I'm getting that warning saying, "Please wait, it'll open in a minute."
Yeah, I'm doing the same thing.
Okay, well, that's, thank you for...
Mine opened, but it had some, had some warnings and...
Well, I had it a paper copy, so I went through it quite carefully.
It has the application, the...
Mine has a bit of a reading.
Yeah, so I will bring, I will bring that up tomorrow.
Now, do we need a, a motion to support this?
I think you, you need to have a proper motion to accept that ACP grant, so somebody...
So I'll move that we write a letter of support for the County ACP grant.
Thank you. So all in favor? And maybe we could add the ACP grant as covering emergency...
Radio.
Emergency calls. Maybe we could add that.
Yeah, I saw that in the agenda for tomorrow's meeting, so.
Alright. On the seven B, we requested to have a little bit of a comparison between the different tests that could be interesting, about provided our council with the comparative between all-town testing and the Fort McCloud and Calgary. If you remember, there was a discussion regarding the possible toxicity of the fluoride and especially regarding arsenic. If you look at the arsenic level in two towns that do not have added fluoride as Fort McCloud and Calgary, you will see that the natural levels of arsenic is far superior to ours, which tells us that adding fluoride in our water does not impact the toxicity of the water through arsenic. And that was a very interesting comparative for me, and can I answer maybe possibly some of the concern that you brought forward? Is there something else you would like to talk about, Counsel?
No, I appreciate that, you know, I appreciate them giving us that report, you know, it makes me feel better, I mean, it's concerned about the...
Yeah, the toxicity, yeah, nothing wrong with that.
We needed to, I wanted to be clear on that, so I'm, I'm happy with that. I, I would like to just say that I feel like I was a little misunderstood when I brought this forward. I, you know, it was, it was not my intention at all to, you know, to overturn the, you know, the plebiscite. I guess what my, my feeling was and I guess is, is that, you know, the questions that are, that are determined by plebiscite are really very seldom ever settled questions and they, you know, they'll just keep coming back and I felt, my feeling was that if, if Council could act in a wise way, that if both sides felt like they were, were, you know, had been responded to, that then the chances of it coming back to us again would be, would be lessened. You know, that's, that, that was my intent.
Okay, well, your message is well-taken and I appreciate your concern about toxicity and I was fairly pleased to see that the arsenic level was definitely not up, which was a very good point.
Was interesting to see how many trace, traces of how many other toxins end up in the water.
And it's, it's really, it is in fact interesting to see how much part has to, have to keep an eye on all those, those elements that are in the water in order to make sure that the water is safe.
I thought it was interesting how the, of all the things that were in there, aluminum was not, was unacceptable because it was higher than it should be. Where in the world the aluminum coming from?
Actually, what I read there is, is it comes actually from the, from the coagulant chemicals that they use to treat the water.
And, yeah, it does, and it, it will vary.
I just, on that, it was interesting, I have some other reports and it changes seasonally too.
Yeah.
So Fort McCloud was also over, but in their next one, the same as ours, we were both under. Yeah, it's very, it was very odd.
Yeah, I'm glad to see, but everything else passed and was acceptable, you know, so...
But you wonder what, you wonder what the, you know, who decides what's acceptable too. Because a number of those things are cumulative type toxins, that means, it means it's not going to hurt you, but it's going to accumulate in your body and, and keep adding, so.
You know, there is, there is truth in anything that you say, but when you start to eat fish that has all those heavy metals in them, toxicity in eating food is even higher than what you have right now, and you eat meat and you have pesticides, I mean, we're still alive, let's move on.
We live long enough.
Seventy, bus parking. Here, if you remember, we had a discussion regarding the issue that is particular to one of our street, Fourth Street?
Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue, sorry, in, in, on the east side. And there are a few operators there that park the, the buses on the front of the house, creating a little bit of a narrow passage, especially when we have snow removal. So in the wintertime is definitely more of an issue than in the spring and summertime. Nonetheless, we have Lloyd that did a little bit of a synopsis of his observation and I need to have a little bit of your feedback on this. I also wondered if Jeff, you could maybe also offer an ideas that you had maybe regarding possible solutions to parking somewhere else and nearby, if possible, on a lot that might be a town hall. So do you want to start, Counsel, regarding that? We have really two or three options. One, we ban it altogether, but it's only one street that really is, it's only one avenue, one area in town that has a problem. Or we limit the use seasonally, or we keep the status quo, which is possibly not the best way, but it is also a solution. So Jeff, would you maybe talk about an alternative, if there is one, regarding the parking of those buses nearby?
Sure. The mayor and I were just talking, do we want, if we want buses off of residential streets, do we want to look to provide places for them? Potentially on Fourth Avenue, we have the soccer field parking lot, which after November sits empty till May. So during the snow removal months, that could potentially be a reasonable location, because no one else uses it.
It's pretty far away from the hotel.
Yeah, it's just across the road, but what it, the only thing to be cautious of is we're, we're setting an expectation that we'll provide spots for buses or large vehicles to park, not just on Fourth Avenue, but potentially all around. The issue with Fourth is that it's relatively narrow and they get buses and stock trailers on both sides. So it does become a problem, it becomes one lane essentially in the snow time when there's snow on the road. But I did throw that out, that, you know, that, that lot is there, once minor football's done, there's nobody there again until next May. So potentially a November to April type of arrangement might not be unreasonable, but I don't know how that deals with... The other one I thought of that I had, I didn't think of when we talked, Mayor, is Second Street East. If you go down almost to the end of Second and Ninth, in the trailer park there, there's probably six buses there right now.
Yes, there is.
Now, they all park off-street, so that's a bit of a subtle difference, is they're all off-street in the yard of the homes there. Not to say that's great, but they're off-street, but it may be an unreasonable amount of buses to be parked in front of two homes.
What I thought, I thought, it's very difficult for us to, to make a decision without having a little bit of feedback from the operator of those buses. And I thought, why couldn't we maybe ask them to come and sit with us or sit with administration and try to look at, first of all, help them understand what the issue is for us, and then try to see if there is a solution that could come out of that meeting.
What I'm wondering is, along those lines actually, is if there is something that could be done on a more informal basis so that we don't have to be passing a bylaw for it. Look, there's this parking space here that we have available during the winter months, kind of a thing that doesn't require Council to have to be making a bylaw restricting it on all streets, just because we have a couple of streets that have it, it's a bit of an issue.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a very limited issue in our town, really, because anywhere else where there are buses, there are very wide avenues and it's not really the same issue.
I, I like Counselor Versus's idea. There was always an occasion when somebody may say, "Well, you know, I'll have to do it," right? And so we give them that option, and if, if that fails, then we have to come back and make a policy on that and a bylaw. But certainly we should give them an option. I like the option that Jeff has suggested, because it's, it's not far from those bus drivers at all, half a block away.
I've recently been reading a book called Nudge, and one of the things that I really like about it is what they call libertarian paternalism. And what it is, is giving people a nudge to do the right thing and not making it a bylaw that you have to do this.
Right, invite them to come.
Invite them to come to the table and figure something out here. I would, I would really like to see us work on that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's what I felt, I felt that the more we can involve the people, the better chance we have to have compliance with whatever we want.
It's a timer too.
Alright. Okay, so if I understand properly, somebody needs to make a resolution to request administration to meet with those folks and invite them to a meeting regarding...
I'm prepared to make that resolution, to, to ask the administration to invite the bus operators to, to a meeting to discuss the situation as if we come to a, a resolve.
Could we be a little bit more precise? Do you want the Estill?
The Estills, Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue?
Fourth Avenue, for now.
Okay. Alright, so you are right with this?
That wording is good. Check out the gist of it.
Alright.
Do you want to read it back, Shim?
Need by Counselor Barnes, that administration discuss potential buses being parked on Fourth Avenue.
Bus operators.
Yeah, maybe if you want to use whereas, you can say whereas.
Whereas we've been having problems in the past with traffic in that particular area of Fourth Avenue.
Whereas Fourth Avenue is.
Therefore, I resolve that we move passive, I move that we, that we have what I suggested before.
Yeah, whereas Fourth Avenue is limited.
Firmly addition, can we invite our transportation supervisor from Westwood?
Brock?
At the same time.
That's a good idea, have him come to.
Who's this?
Brock.
We're not Westwood buses.
Brock, Brock Pilling, have him come along with them.
These aren't Westwood buses.
Those are, those are independent operators.
We have some Westwood buses parking on other streets too, so why should he be here?
Okay, let me, let me help you explain that, I appreciate your, your invite, but the invitation from the school board and the transport, transportation section is that the yard that they have is open to all Westwood buses to be parked there, all of them. And so some people choose to and some people choose not to. That is something that's not mandatory.
Are we not talking about getting buses parked off of the residential streets somewhere?
No.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter who they belong to, because if you go down Sixth Street West, there's two buses that are parked on the street all the time.
Constantly.
Yeah, but.
Why is Sixth Street, is it creating, is it creating a problem with them being there?
If they go between the Sixth Street and the South, it does create a problem. Or if they sweep it in the summertime, it creates a problem. I mean, let's have all the players here.
What do you think the section of the Westwood Division will help us with, help me understand, how it can add to the offer that is already there?
He might suggest that, that the buses that we're having some problem with could park in the bus lanes at the different schools. He might suggest that. He might suggest that they could take up part of a parking lot, you know, the end of a parking lot at a school division. I mean, his important, his input, I think, is important, because I think he could give us some, some real eye openers and say, hey, you're not really allowed on the, on the soccer field parking lot, I appreciate that, but why couldn't they park in the school junior high parking lot on the, on the south end of the school or something like that?
Okay, I understand your, your concern to make it more fair playing field.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, so from this point of view, would you accept the friendly amendment? The friendly amendment, would you? All right, so questions?
Well, my, my feeling is that, is that we've only had the complaint from one area and, and I always say if it's not broke, don't fix it, so that, that's, you know, I think we should tackle it in the area where we've had the complaint first and see, see where we get there. If, 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 if we perceive that there's a perception that comes up that this is a, you know, a community-wide issue, then, then we can move to the next step. But like I say, my, my feeling right now is that you start with where the problem is and don't, don't create a problem where there isn't one.
Are you going to invite Lloyd? I brought along, sir.
I think Lloyd would be great. I mean, Lloyd did, Lloyd has done the, the background information, I think it would be fine to have Lloyd there because he's, he's, he's put together the background here for us.
Okay, Counselor Bell, please.
I, I think that when we're dealing with the idea of keeping this a conversation in a diplomatic, diplomatic input, I think there's a danger if we have too many people in the room, that we end up with 15 people in the room and we're not going to get anything done. So that, that would be my concern with opening it up to kind of a wide, let's get everybody in and talk about it right now.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I also feel like in our, in our new goal to be resolute, that we don't micromanage what I'm sure our CAO is perfectly capable of taking care of here. So I think the motion as presented is probably sufficient to, to give the direction from us and then, you know, maybe leave it up to our administration to decide who's best to bring to that table and trying to resolve that in, in a way satisfactory to Al. So again, just out of fear of micromanaging that issue.
All right, Counselor Bantry, could you live with that?
Oh.
That we take step one, that we, we take step one as.
But I haven't mentioned.
Jeff?
I don't want to interfere with motions, but could I add this? Just because I know who we've consulted with prior. So the motion is roughly, whereas there are traffic congestion problems with buses on Fourth Avenue, it be moved that administration meet with those bus owners and invite them to park in an alternative location. That was Counselor Barnes, if I interpreted correctly. Would you be open to add and to consult with Westwood School Division to encourage drivers to use the bus yard on Main Street whenever possible?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Because we've had some discussion with Brock, he'd be very open to talk to his drivers about it, he's very good.
Yeah, okay, I think that would cover the two aspects. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Don't say I moved that.
All in favor?
This is worse here.
Thank you, all right, I think we'll come to a decent resolution.
Friendly amendment is coming from Richard.
Totally.
He just threw his voice over there for a little bit.
All right, let's go to seven C, Town of Carstens ACP Grant. There is a grant that is open until about February, February, mid-February, February fall, so it's coming very quickly, so.
What number are you on?
Seven C. So Jeff, would you like to maybe talk to that item, please?
Sure.
Since administration will be doing it.
There's not a separate document, counsel, it's just in your backgrounder. At CCW, we talked about whether we want to put forward any applications to the ACP grant and council wanted a week to kind of kick a few things around. I will tell you, I, I had Tyler start the application for a potential IMDP update with the county, just because we're going to meet with them tomorrow and so if that came around, we could get that one going. But we also talked about some shared service options and we talked about economic development officer shared position. So those are the things that were discussed. We can submit two that we are the author of and then we can support others, which we've resolved to do, support the counties tonight. But we can submit two and so I just wanted some direction from council on what those two priorities might look like.
Personally, I think the IMDP needs an update. We can carry on not ever making a document to allow us what will happen on the fringe of our town. It needs to be fixed.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so that to me is a priority and if we can get a little sum of money to do that, that'd be very nice. The other one, the EDAF, we all always spoke about it, shared service, we spoke about that too. That might be an important one, we should kind of give a new kick at the can and try to partner properly with the county to try to come to better solutions for shared services.
But if we're only going to be able to submit two and we, we all agree that the IMDP has got to be priority number one, then of the economic development officer or the continuation of the shared services study?
Which one?
Which one? They're both pretty important, to be honest.
And to tell you the truth, but the economic development can only be the object of a grant application if the county will join us. If not.
One other wild card, we know tomorrow, the county may have another one they could apply for. They could potentially be the applicant for the IMDP. I, I just don't know what they, we know about the, the one they've given us for the emergency radios, I don't know about the other one. So we can find that out tomorrow, but potentially they could apply for that.
So between the two of us, we can have four.
How much time do we have? What's our time?
February, February, the folks in this to be in the office.
Yeah.
One other thing, mayor, sorry, I should have, and I've kind of figured this out since into the backgrounder. The reason the turnaround's so quick on this is this is the current fiscal, they're trying to get this money out in April.
The 2015 money.
Because it's the 2015, 16 fiscal, so my guess is this is going to come around again in the fall for the 2016, 17 money and it won't have as quick a turnaround, but they're trying to get everything processed before the fiscal year end. So we may have another go at it this, this fall. I don't know that for sure, but that's my suspicion.
Yeah. Counselor Bantry?
As we're talking about some of these grants, is there still a building Canada grant?
Oh, no.
Building Canada fund? Building, there was building.
That ran its course with the conservatives.
Yeah. All right, so this is where we at, we need.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that when we, when we looked at the shared services grant, or the shared services review, you know, that involved more than just the county and the town, it also involved the town of McGrath. And so I'm thinking, rather than getting too strung out on this, that we maybe stick with the development, you know, the, the economic development portion of a piece of it, unless we're prepared to bring in, you know, McGrath again.
Well, it's a, it's a good point. I think tomorrow we'll have a better sense.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I don't think we can quite second guess them there.
So do we want to motion? One, one thought, just in other meetings and such, I understood that one of the conversations around the county table has been that county economic development officers are rare throughout the province and so supporting one from the town makes more sense on their perspective rather than having one of their own and, you know, I think they would be very supportive of that initiative.
Well, like I said, tomorrow we'll tell a better story. Now, with your new resolution, how do you want me to add on that one?
Just a quick question before you move on here. On the same vein as, as Counselor Poy, when I'm asking about the timing, our next meeting isn't for two weeks, right? Is that enough time? Because that's really pushing it.
Well, we have no choice.
If I may.
There's no choice in the matter.
Perhaps as council, we could defer this decision to the intermunicipal committee who after meeting tomorrow can then, you know, offer their recommendation to.
Maybe that is wise.
Yeah.
Would you be all right with that?
So.
It's a little bit of a problem because.
Well, what if, because we'll have to have formal resolutions, but we could go on the recommendation of the intermunicipal committee, prepare the grants and have them ready for the second council meeting in January for the resolution numbers.
I think it would be a wise way to do it.
Yeah, because the committee can't make, the committee can't make the decision without the council, but that would, that would. That would expedite it a little bit.
That would beef up that committee with one more member.
Then you got a, then you got a majority. Yeah, we could certainly on their recommendation, prepare the grants, they're not particularly onerous.
Okay, all right.
And then have them ready for the second meeting for motions.
So what we need, we need probably a resolution to allow the committee to look into the ACP grant applications.
I'll move that the IMDP committee look into which of the grant applications would be most beneficial to us and instruct administration to prepare those applications for our next council meeting.
Okay, so you can even put the date on a 13th of January, yeah, IMDP meeting. It'll be, it'll be a little bit more transparent. Okay, thank you, councilors. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so let's move on. Eight, we have financial report for September 2015, any questions?
September?
November.
November.
Yeah, it says on November 30th.
Yes, sorry, I, my copy, it says September.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial reports.
Just one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Big difference there on the cash and temporary investments?
Yeah.
Just wondering where the, that's a, that's a, that's a nice difference.
Yeah, well.
I suspected it's money that's allocated someplace else.
We're holding the $600,000 of the disaster recovery funding.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it is, it needs to be spent, so.
Yeah, no, that's what I suspected it probably was, but it was a pretty big number that jumped out there, so.
Any other questions? Sing none. Counselor Edmonds, can you give us a resolution?
I'll move that we accept the financial report up to the end of November 30th, 2015.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
If we should buy any, took it on the power ball.
Okay, all right, if you go to committee and other reports, nine A, December 2015 bylaw report from Lloyd, any questions, any comments?
Thank goodness those skunks aren't bothering us right now, but I did smell one the other day. Why are you coming out early?
Nine B, the 2015 annual bylaw report, any questions regarding this one?
The annual, I, I was just curious if there was a year-over-year, is there, I could probably look back at my history.
Actually, Lloyd gave me that today. He gave me a year-over-year back to 2011, so I could include that next meeting for council's information, but I just got it this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. And do you want a resolution?
No, I don't.
You don't need to accept.
No, no, I mean.
Oh, to include the report in the next meeting?
To bring the report.
That's okay, Al. I'll do it.
You will get penalized if you forget.
Okay, nine C, 2015 development report from Norman, any questions? No. All right, so if I sing none, no fingers up, I would think we are accepting them. Okay, under 10, a question of others. Counselor Bantry, go ahead. You are part of the museum committee and you have an announcement for us.
I was part of it after Counselor Edmonds. Counselor Edmonds did some work on this and I appreciate the work that has been done by Counselor Edmonds.
Can you give us a little bit the gist of what it is that you're trying to accomplish?
Alberta Museums has recognized the Courthouse Museum and certified it as a recognizable museum until the year 2020 and I think this is an absolutely wonderful thing that's happened. The chairman of the board, Diane Barnes, has done a tremendous amount of work on it along with Counselor Edmonds and this means it's great advertisement. We'll be getting an advertisement in Travel Alberta and also of the Alberta museum website. It puts us in good standing. I, I feel that if there is some grants out there, that it will give the Courthouse Museum a little bit of an advantage, possibly, being recognized and such. But I just, I just want to make sure that the chairman of the board, Mrs. Barnes, gets the recognition that she, you know, that she has done so much work on this. She's attended a lot of classes on her own, paid for those classes. She's been to Edmonton, to the Alberta Museums Association. She is now presently working on bylaws, policies and procedures. I've told you that I'll assist her in that work and if there's any other councilors that would like to join us, you're sure welcome to do it. We need to get policies and procedures in place so that we can move forward in a lot of things. And she's tying up a lot of loose ends and I, I appreciate the work that she's done. I want council to know that.
Yeah, thank you very much and we will send her, I will send her a little kudos now. Do that. And Counselor Edmonds, thank you for all the support you provided to get that application done. I know that was many of the words, I very much appreciate that. Yeah, well, I know what you call a few. Jeff, there was one point that we did not add to the agenda, but yesterday at the mayor's and re, at the former mayor's meeting, we were talking about that excess money of $35,000 that is left in the study for the Chief Mountain. And we were wondering if.
That's practices.
Yeah, we were wondering, since they're looking for a project, something to use that money is two words. I was. that money as two words, I was, we were wondering if your board would be appreciating the four, the four mayors, Carston, Raymond McGrath and Sterling, to put forward a proposal to look at a way to divert waste. Because we had the presentation by your chair yesterday.
So, so if I might, not my chair anymore. Councillor Poynter is.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's a great question. We're actually addressing it on the agenda tomorrow in our meeting, so.
All right, so if this council is in favor of such a thing, the other mayors felt that their council would probably support that initiative. It would be one initiative as an idea of a project. And we thought that maybe if those towns were putting an ACP application together, somebody who didn't use all their grant might possibly have a better chance, especially for diversion of garbage to a landfill as being a worthwhile regional initiative. If you had a chance to read the herald today, you will see that Land Bridge is currently moving forward to side, curb-side pickup for recycling, which means that on the long run, they will no longer accept waste that is mixed up with recyclable, which means that all Chief Mountain will no longer be able to truck the excess of garbage over there. So that becomes a very, very serious issue, and they have that going to be presented before the end of this year. And they're moving forward very, very quickly with that idea. So I think that is something you need to read that article. If you don't have the herald, ask Jeff to lend you that copy. I read it and I love a son, I had all the bells ringing in my head, thinking it's exactly what I thought was going to happen.
Given, given the volume that we transfer to Leverage, and it's significant enough that we wouldn't stay under our cap.
Yeah, which means that we would not, no longer be able to have sustainability.
But we have to truck it up.
I think, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think we truck more than 10%, don't we? 10%?
Way, way more than 10%.
That's over 2,000 ton.
Yeah, it's closer to 20%.
Yeah, so, which is way too much. So which means that the, the greatest amount of waste we can divert from there, that is something we, we have to do. Therefore, the idea of that possible grant, I would purpose not only to figure out a way to do best practice, but also to start to implement and to test it for a whole year and see what it does to that landfill. So that's what I suggest. And since Carston, Raymond, McGrath and Sterling are probably the biggest urban kind of rural center, rural urban, I would say it would make sense to start that, because the issue is not with the rural, it's with the towns.
So are you saying that they won't take general garbage, but they will take recyclables? They won't take anything?
So unless, unless it's separated out.
Well, that's what I mean. If we were, we're separated out into recyclables, like tin cans and.
Right, so what happens right now is, is we, we take, especially there on the east side of our area.
Yeah.
So talking of Sterling and the county, Warner and through there, quite often, that stuff never comes out to our landfill. It gets shipped straight to, to Leverage. So it's just being dumped in there at their transfer stations and then trucked in. So if we're accepting it in the transfer station, we won't be able to dump it because it'll have that mixed in with it. That's where the problem.
Yeah, and sooner or later, we need to find a solution, a long-term solution.
Because you can't, you can't afford the machine to separate it out yourselves.
You know, it is true that we have 75-year life for that site, but only if we have 10,000 ton per year in each cell. That's the requirement. Okay, so maybe councillor Poynter, you can keep that in mind. Correspondents?
Yeah, I'll have my full report in the next council meeting.
Thank you, I'm sure it'll be an interesting meeting. Anything regarding correspondence? Nothing? Okay.
I will move that we go on camera.
Thank you.
Will we have a recess first?
Yeah, we can have a recess, okay.
Do you need a recess?
Sure, I'll withdraw that, I'll move to recess.
That's a silly question.
All right, we recess in four, five minutes, all in favor? Thank you. And councillor, I think that we should be done by quarter after six, okay? Thank you so much, the media, for doing such a great job for us all. We appreciate the reporting.
Something I forgot to mention.